Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners working session for April 13th, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Yeah.
Rothman.
Here.
Placido.
Here.
Vaughn. Thompson.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
DePone.
Here.
Carswell.
Here.
Pickelman.
Here.
Bowle.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Mayhie.
Here.
President Heck.
Here, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of January 12th, 2023. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What we're going to do this evening, because we are having a presentation by Raff Tellis on the Township Strategic Plan, is we're going to move a public comment to after the presentation so that residents have the opportunity to comment or question on things that they hear during the presentation itself. And for this section of the agenda, which is actually our only item of business this evening, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Bill Bowle, who is the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. But before I do, Commissioner Bowle, I just want to thank you for your leadership and all of the work that you've put into this over the last several months. I think we're in a really good place, and I'm excited about what we're going to hear tonight and what we're going to do coming out of this plan.
Well, thank you. Team effort. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for being here. With us tonight, we have, I see Catherine Carter and Julia Novak from Raff Tellis. I don't know, Julia, if there's anyone else joining. I hope you will introduce them when they're here. That's all I can see right now.
Just the two of us.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you for being here. Raff Tellis is the vendor partner we selected from a number of proposals to help us build out and articulate a multi-year strategic plan for Abington Township. While the team from Raff Tellis is certainly going to walk us through the process of how we got here and what's in the draft, I just want to offer two quick comments, one note of thanks, and the other some context for what you're going to see tonight. Thank you first. A thank you to the manager for his knowledge of the industry here and vetting of the vendors. We got the right one, and a large part of that had to do with management, Freddie, your knowledge of the industry and making sure we did get the right one. So, thank you. Thank you to Terri for her many hours of coordination and communication out both to Raff Tellis and inwardly across the township with all the employees who were engaged in the process, as well as all of you here on the board. Thank you very much. Ashley McElvein, I know you've done a lot of work directly with Raff Tellis and behind the scenes. I hope that you see that your work is reflected in the draft plan, and I just want to acknowledge that and express our gratitude to you for the work that you've done. Thank you to the members of the committee. This is a brand-new committee, and I want to thank my colleagues, Commissioners Henry, Schreiber, Weingrad, and Carswell for their partnership and leadership and the many ways in which their input helped shape the direction this took. Thank you to the other members of the board as well, who made time to talk with Raff Tellis. And finally, certainly last but not least, I want to thank the residents who engaged with the township and with Raff Tellis in our listening and input sessions. Thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for your input. Thank you for your questions and the many ways in which you challenged the ideas to help make them better. Your ideas were thought-provoking, and I know many of them found their way into this draft plan that we'll see tonight. Okay. What the heck is this thing? And maybe more importantly, what isn't it? A strategic plan should articulate a framework for how we decide what the most important projects are that we work on. I think, for a minute, I like to make movie references. I think of Ben Braddock in The Graduate. He didn't know who he was, but he steps out of the pool, and the neighbor all of a sudden pulls him apart, and we know the one line, "Ben, one word, plastics." He immediately had someone telling him what to focus on before he knew who he was. Township can't do what it needs to do unless it knows who it wants to be. And so, a single part of a strategic plan is to articulate both inwardly and outwardly who we want Abington to be before we decide to get into plastics. So, building off of that framework which you'll hear tonight, it should tell us, the strategic plan, us, meaning elected officials, township staff, residents, business owners, who we aspire to be. What values do we hold? How will we act on those values? It should look out over the horizon of a few years and offer us some areas that we can budget for and measure success against. So, the draft will be used to identify these specific projects that we'll work on over the next few years. The plan declares that these things are important, both to the here and now, and also to the long-term future in Abington. And when I reference my thanks to the commissioners on the Strategic Planning Committee, what I'm specifically talking about is that unanimously, they voiced their concern that any strategic plan partner that we had to work with needed to be able to help us put together a framework that had specific projects, not just mission, vision, values, but something that would help us articulate specific things that we could work on over the next several years. All of which brings us to the overall point of this. The transparency that's created through doing all of this will allow the public to know how we're doing, but just as importantly, will allow the township staff to know how they're doing. We, and I know I can speak on behalf of my colleagues on the board, we are eternally grateful for all the creative ways that day in and day out, the members of this township find creative ways to stretch themselves to bring services to the residents. The strategic plan should offer them some important context that helps them understand that what they're doing is important and why it is important to the residents of the township. So, that's the context for why we're here. That's a little list of some of the people who've worked on this, and I will, at this point, turn it over to our partners from Raff Tellis, who will walk us through the draft, and from there, we will look forward to, at a future meeting, the presentation of the final strategic plan. Julia, thanks for being here. Catherine, thanks for being here. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. If someone could allow me to share my screen, that would be fantastic, and I will walk you through the present. Thank you. Right, that was like magic. Boom, there we go. I think I've got it. All right. Well, appreciate very much being with you and being with you virtually, as Catherine and I have been in different parts of the country. She's in Colorado today. I've been in North Dakota. Color me lucky, right? We appreciate being with you all in this way and sharing the work that we've had the opportunity to do with the township. We don't often work with elected officials and staff who have the knowledge of the importance and value of strategic planning, and so, to that end, the township has been well-served by you all, and it's been a very, a great process for us in terms of talking with the people in the township, the people who work for the township, and the elected officials. So, thank you for that. Catherine Carter's been the project manager on this project. She's been with you all and me at every step of the way, and so, tonight, we're going to give you an overview of the project and then walk you through the strategic framework. And as Commissioner Bowle said, you know, we know you wanted more than vision, mission, and values, but you wanted that too, and so, we're going to share those results, as well as the focus areas, those things that must go well in order for the township to achieve the vision. And then, we'll touch on some of the strategies that we've developed, but the detail that's in the plan, obviously, would be a little much in a PowerPoint. So, we're going to keep it high-level, but hopefully give you enough examples to give you context, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, you know, Commissioner Bowle, you gave a great introduction to the importance of strategic planning, and one of the things that we find when we do this work with local governments across the country, not everyone really understands why you need to do a strategic plan, what the value of it is, and part of our job is to make that process approachable for everyone to participate, no matter what point they're entering it from. So, we talk about the plan as the answer to three questions. What do we know to be true today? So, an understanding of where you are, what you hope will be true in the future, what the vision is that you have for your township, and then, how do we get there? What's the actual plan? The goals for this project were to set that long-term direction. I sometimes think about it as north. You know, this is true north. When you look at the compass, you know, which way are we going? We're going north, and so, this is that long-term vision that you all have. It needed to incorporate the perspectives of the members of the governing body, the community members that we had an opportunity to talk with, and also the very talented staff that you have at Abington Township, who will make this all a reality. And then, certainly articulate those outcome areas, those things that must go well in order for Abington to be successful in the long run. We've been working on this project for several months. I think we started, I think, I'm trying to remember exactly when we started. Do you remember exactly, Catherine?
Last July, maybe?
No, a little farther along than that. But anyway, sometime last year, yeah, we started working on this with you all, and we've had the chance to work with the Strategic Planning Committee at different points along the way. We've had meetings with them to brief them and to help and have their, you know, really intense input in shaping this project. But we had that kickoff meeting with the Strategic Planning Committee, and there's this process of working both outside and inside, kind of with the elected officials, with the organization. When we answered that first question, what do we know to be true today, that comes to the township in the form of an environmental scan. It provides context for the work that we're doing so that everyone has a common basis of knowledge. That input, along with input from Abington Township employees, in terms of mission, why they get up and come to work every day, and the values that guide them during their daily work, that information was shared during a workshop that we had with the management team, and we began crafting the mission statement, articulating the values, and then identifying the focus areas themselves. We met with the Strategic Planning Committee, talked through the focus areas with them, continued to get input to move forward, and then articulate the vision and the focus areas. We've had strategy sessions with staff from the township. So, for each of the focus areas that we're going to walk you through tonight, what are some key strategies that will help identify, help move you towards success in those areas, and then what metrics are available, so you know how you're doing? So, we did have a check-in with the structure of the plan, the framework, with the vision, the focus areas, earlier this year, and then we had some community meetings where we gathered input on that information, and that has kind of brought us to where we are tonight. So, I'm going to walk you through the framework itself. When I use the term "framework," I assume everyone knows what I'm talking about, but that's not always the case, so I want to put it in front of you. The vision is an aspirational statement. It's about what you hope will be true for the township in the future, what you hope you'll be known for. The mission statement, and the mission statement is more of the role and purpose of the township government. It's the employee's why. It's their call to action. It's the why they get out of bed and come to work every day and serve the community. We want their input on that. What is motivating them? How do they see themselves in the community? And we got some fantastic input that we were able to use to draft that mission statement. Values, values guide behavior. We say they exist in an organization whether they're stated or not, and so, we asked your employees, when they see their colleagues at their best, what values are they demonstrating? And so, that input was also used to develop the mission and values. And you'll see the thumbprints of the organization on those statements. It's very important that employees see themselves in the mission, that they see their work, that they see the meaning of their work, and all of it comes to the board for approval, but with an understanding of the work that went into it. And then, we developed those focus areas initially, kind of the big buckets of things that must go well. We got some input from the staff. We refined it a little bit with the Strategic Planning Committee, and then, once we had that framework, we were able to dig into the strategies. The strategies are the more specific and granular projects or programs, initiatives that the township needs to undertake in order to make progress in each of the focus areas. So, kind of feel like there should be a drumroll and maybe someone else's voice besides mine even reading the slide. I don't know, Commissioner Bowle, would you want to read the vision statement that's been formed from this?
Sure. The draft vision statement is, "Abington is a vibrant, inclusive, and welcoming community, supported by engaged and informed residents, a diverse local economy, and regional connections that make the township an attractive destination for all to thrive."
You know, all consultants kind of have a bias when they go into this work, and one of ours that we've shared with you is that we like to write the vision statement in the present tense, so some people might look at this and say, "Not yet," and that's okay. This is the aspiration. This is what we want to be known for, and this is the future that you're walking into together. Rich, could I put you on the spot to read the mission statement? I should have told you all I was going to do this, I guess.
No problem, Julia. "Abington Township's dedicated team is committed to providing quality service to all within our community."
Now, you'll notice there that the word "service" is capitalized, and the reason for that is because it is kind of a cue for the values. Rich, do you want to read those?
Sustainability, excellence, respect, vision, integrity, commitment, engagement.
Again, you know, this was the answer to the question, when our employees are at their best, what values are they demonstrating? And so, these are the values that are important to the organization, and they're the ones that they want to tell new people about when they join the organization. These are our values. We want to share them with you, and this is how we, this is what we expect from you going forward. So, vision, mission, values at a very high level begin to produce the framework for the strategic plan, and then, we develop the focus areas, those things that must go well in order for the community to be successful. And there are six focus areas that you all identified through this work. You have to be fiscally sustainable. There has to be economic growth. You need vibrant public spaces, excellent public services, sustainable infrastructure, and you need to be an inclusive community. And so, I'm going to ask Catherine Carter to now walk through the elements of the focus areas.
Great. So, Julia talked a lot about the process and kind of how we got to each of the different elements of the strategic plan, and focus areas was really where the work of the board's Strategic Planning Committee and staff and the community input really comes together to reflect what needs to happen in order for the community to be successful into the future. And just in terms of the community input, I know that several of you participated, and I suspect that some of the folks in the audience also participated in our community input sessions, but we did have two sessions that were at the beginning of March. They were 90 minutes each, and we had about 30 people from the community come and participate in those sessions. What we did was, you know, we took some of the work that had been drafted on the focus areas to that point and basically shared it and said, "Okay, for each of these focus areas, you know, does what we're describing as success resonate with you as something that we should be striving for, as a thing that will help to move the needle forward for the community in terms of being successful?" And so, you know, we asked people to weigh in on the written words, which was part of it, but more importantly, does this capture the spirit of what success looks like in this area? And assuming that it does capture the general gist of what we're looking to achieve, what are the specific projects or programs or initiatives or things that need to happen in order for the community to be successful and, you know, for the township to be able to move forward? And so, when we got that input, we incorporated it kind of as appropriate with the different focus area success statements, but then, we also used it as a way to drive some of those strategies and to make sure that the work that was done by staff in trying to come up with implementation plans really aligned with the needs and desires of the community. So, I'm going to be talking a little bit about each of the focus areas and sharing some of the key concepts that we're looking at success in terms of, but I'm also going to share some of the community input and the strategies that were developed. Like I said, I've got kind of a couple of good examples, and there are many more for each of these that you all will be able to see in the actual draft of the plan. We really didn't want to overwhelm you with all of the details on the slides. They got to be very, very text-heavy. So, as far as fiscal sustainability goes, that was kind of the first focus area that we asked folks to weigh in on. You see some kind of key concepts, and what's important to us in fiscal sustainability were things like balancing the short-term needs with the long-term needs, and that was something that came across pretty much every group that we talked to, was this desire to not just focus on what's right in front of us right now, but also what's coming in the future and what we need to do in order to be prepared for that future. We're obviously focused on having sound policies and practices and reporting structures in place that will help us to know that we're being successful into the future, but we want the fiscal planning and those activities to really support the provision of services. So, we want to make sure that we have what we need in order to meet expectations of the community and of residents for what they hope to see from the township. You know, this is one of those examples where, you know, we heard in this area from the residents in the focus groups about, you know, we want more transparency, we want to make sure that information is accessible, and that the information that's being shared is something that we're able to kind of get and digest and really, you know, use. It should be usable. It should be accessible. And so, you know, one of the strategies that has come out of this particular area is really focused on making sure that we're evaluating and implementing innovative technology initiatives that will ultimately support increased engagement and customer convenience. So, really getting at that, we want the interaction with the township to be a positive one. We want folks to have access to the information that they need, and we want folks to be able to engage and know what's going on. And so, that is kind of one example of a project or a program that's going to support us actually moving in the direction that we've decided is really important within this focus area. So, that's kind of fiscal sustainability. Key concepts around economic growth. We talked a lot about local economic diversity and then investment in community infrastructure. We want Abington to be an easy and safe place for business, and we want to really lean into some of our possible partnerships, whether they are public or private or governmental, but we want to make sure that we're acting in a collaborative way and that we're making the most of the resources that are available to us. If we move to sustainable infrastructure, we had some strong key concepts here and some really good discussion. We want ultimately infrastructure that helps people to connect, and whether that's connecting between neighborhoods or on different transportation systems or even using technology, we want our infrastructure to be really, really rock-solid. We want to make sure that we are caring for our facilities and that we have kind of modern, resilient facilities into the future while also reducing negative environmental impacts. Ultimately, you know, we want our infrastructure to be adaptable. We know that the future is probably going to look a little bit different than the present, and so, we want our buildings and our facilities and kind of our built environment to be one that's flexible enough to meet not just the needs of today, but also the needs of the future. In the stakeholder, or excuse me, in the community meetings, we had some really good conversation around this, and we also had great conversation around this with staff and with the board's Strategic Planning Committee, especially around topics that included Abington being safe and walkable or bikeable. And so, you know, another example of a strategy that's going to support movement in a particular focus area, we have a strategy around expanding access to and implementation of non-vehicular modes of transportation. So, really making sure that we have the infrastructure to support cyclists and pedestrians and folks who want to use public transportation, so rail, bus, et cetera. So, again, kind of good opportunities to see really specific things that flow from these high-level statements. Key concepts in the inclusive community focus area were things like celebration of differences and creating that kind of welcoming atmosphere for all. We definitely want to make sure that we have responsive, community-focused, public safety. And then, we had a lot of discussion around kind of housing options and what success in this area would really look like for, from a housing standpoint. And so, talked about having a wide array of options, having resources that are dedicated to helping people be in the housing situation that best fits their needs. And then, the next focus area was vibrant public spaces. So, key concepts here were around access to geographically diverse township facilities, having multi-use spaces. You know, we talked a little bit about that in the sustainable infrastructure as well, but that need for our spaces to be adaptable fits in here as well, too. And then, you know, if we talk, when we talk to the community, one thing that came up in a bunch of different places was this creation of a sense of place. So, we want to be a sense of place. We want to do things that help us to have a sense of place and to be a destination for residents and visitors. So, you know, we talked a lot about kind of having those accessible public spaces and those spaces that are gathering places that make it kind of easy to get to and making it really intuitive where those public spaces are, and then, also having measures that make those spaces safer, like traffic calming and things like that. So, you know, another area that we have a specific strategy that is coming out of this would be in this area around evaluating traffic calming and safety needs to ensure that public spaces are accessible and easy for folks to use. And then, the last area was around excellent public services. So, key concepts here were things like investing in our employees and volunteers, who are ultimately the ones who are going to help the township be able to deliver excellent public services, partnerships, and inclusive engagement. And then, you know, we have obviously a focus on kind of innovation and continuous improvement, and that's something that, again, is kind of a theme in a number of these different areas, because ultimately, it's going to impact how you're doing the work and how you're delivering the services. And then, back to what we talked about in the high-level part of the strategic framework, having that values-driven organizational culture, so that culture that's really all built around service.
Great. Well, you know, it's interesting, even as Catherine was reading through these with you tonight, I could feel the values that were articulated just kind of coming through, the desire for innovation, being sustainable, engaged with the community, all those things that your workforce values, that they wanted to bring front and center to this strategic plan, I think also start to come through in those statements and those focus areas. So, we're happy to listen to your discussion, answer any questions that you have this evening.
Julia, Catherine, if I could really quickly, I just want to point out, both to people watching, listening in the room and on the board, in addition to what you saw today, there are articulated a number of strategies. So, Catherine referenced these strategies to implement and follow up. Those, it would kind of come across as word salad. You wouldn't, you'd see a lot of words and probably wouldn't be able to remember many of them today. So, what we decided to do was hint at and talk, not hint at, but allude to some of the specific ones that are in there. So, the actual document will articulate specific strategies. It's off of those strategies that we will commit to specific projects to implement, and those specific projects will be public-facing, will be up on the website. We'll talk about them when we get down to budget season. Those will be the things that we commit to, measure our success against, and ultimately measure the success of the strategic plan against. So, the kind of bridge to those specific projects are not listed here today because they're just, there are a lot of words, several sentences each, but they will be included in the plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowle. I'm going to first open this up to comments and questions from members of the board. Commissioner DePlacido.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to say that I really liked the mission statement. I think you, or the mission statement draft. I think you nailed it.
Your employees did great work.
Yeah, they did a great job, and I think that, Julia, I don't know about you and Catherine, but it got a lot more public discussion than I thought it would. Like, people really went deep on looking at specific words and whether it would be, what the value is of including this word versus that word. So, we tried to keep it as, and Raff Tellis really encouraged us to be as efficient as possible, but thank you.
Other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Spiegelman.
Along the same lines, I am not a huge fan of acrostics, but the service actually really does sort of nail it. The points, the points of the values, I really think are spot-on, so, thank you. And Commissioner Bowle, fantastic work.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Other comments or questions? Manager Manfredi, once we adopt some version of this plan, are we imagining that we will have a separate place on the township's website where people can go and see this and track progress, as Commissioner Bowle has indicated? and track progress as Commissioner Bowles has indicated?
Short answer is yes. And I'll talk to you a little bit more if you'd like when you're done.
Feel free, feel free to jump in if you'd like.
I, I want to thank, first of all, I can't say enough about what Commissioner Bowles has said and his leadership with the committee. I think there's one person, two people, Commissioner Spiegelman during his presidency when we first embarked on strategic planning, but I think there's one person sitting here this evening who really championed strategic planning in his humility, is keeping him from saying anything, and that would be you, Mr. Hecker. So I, I think that the, the efforts that we've made, you know, in 2018 with, with goal-setting and continuing with priority budgeting and beginning strategic planning during the pandemic, you know, and forging through that, creating focus areas for our current budget, you know, where, where we do have those things tied to, to focus areas and where the department directors will actually tie back to that. But I think this leap, this step will, and the reason I'm going back to where we've been and where we're going is we have begun doing this, but to your point, we will integrate all operations very more, much more clearly. So you'll see in the budget, which is online and is in interactive, you'll be able to see more clearly in one spot, the focus areas, the strategies that Commissioner Bowles was referring to. So people will be able to see it there, but they will also be able to see it on a dedicated page that we'll have. And as you know, we also, we list priorities and projects. So we're going to, once you work through this and once we get into budget and you define how you want to do this, especially a lot of those projects that are going to have to be committed this year with ARPA and other things, we will redefine to make it more easily accessible on the website and other places. So it'll be in a number of places, but yes, there will be one place that people will be able to tie back to.
That's great. Thank you. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? And if not, I will open it up for a public comment. I see we have one person on Zoom.
Sandy Trevor, you're unmeeted. Sandy Trevor, you have to unmute yourself.
Let's come back to Sandy.
Laura Lehman, you're unmeeted.
I sat in on sessions where you were creating the mission and vision, and I sat in on the sessions with the 30 residents out of 58,000 residents. Thirty residents had input, and I didn't tonight see a single thing that reflected anything. We'll, we'll see what's to come, but why are there no documents? None, nothing, nada. That's how you withhold documents and then pass things at the last minute when you throw everything together. This is not okay. And when I listened to the mission statement while you were making all the flowery language, this is in a township that cannot even get the manager to appoint someone to answer the phone. So it's just, what, what you're doing is, you know, picking all of the things that would make everything look wonderful, and you're writing them down. If we were going to have a township with everything wonderful, this is what we've got. But none of it is true. There's no way that somebody should work for two years to clean up trash and not get the help of everybody to do that. It should have been done by one call to the code department and was not. We have Paramount just bought the Walgreens all the way down to Ross and, and the Noble Town Center, and they also bought the eight acres behind the Bader Wood Shopping Center. That's now all owned by Paramount. And that eight acres was zoned in a way that was completely dangerous to the residents. No way around that. It was just a violation of every safety rule that we have. And you are here writing flowery epithets to our strategic planning. This is nonsense. What you've done is cut out the voices of the residents at every turn. Eight hundred and fifty-six-page budget that is absolutely unreadable and does nothing to answer any of the questions that we had about how to lay it out so it would be readable. But in every way, the, the residents are ignored. The website when Mr. Manfredi came was dismantled and put together in a way that no one can find anything. The Preet project was under a button called Office of the Administration or the, or the Manager, Office of the Manager. Nobody would have thought to click that button to find the Preet project. So what's actually being done is completely contradictory to the flowery language that any college student could put a plan together with, which is what you're doing here. And it's being done by people who don't live in this community. The people who live in this community have been cut out of this process. Oh, 30 of them weren't. I was one of the 30. But none of the things that I said are going to be reflected. So what does it matter? Okay? So this is simply not okay to have a township that is seeking consultants to make plans to get grant money that have nothing to do with solving the problems of the everyday citizens. How those tenants at 100 York Apartments got that way is from the literal ignoring of every code, every law, and every plea, because I was with those former tenants who pleaded with you to address the problems. So this township can write as much flowery language that it wants, but until it gets a manager, Mr. Manfredi, I'm talking to you, until it gets a manager that hears what the problems of the tenants are and tries to solve them, it will never succeed at being any of what you have in your mission and your vision. Not that you won't fool some people. They'll read that and they'll say, "Oh, isn't that wonderful? That's just what I'd like." Well, of course, that's how you wrote that. Okay? It just isn't reality. The reality on the ground for people is horrendous, just to get the potholes fixed on their streets, just to get some semblance. And then we have, we have homeless people to, to take care of, and we're building $17 million we're spending on 46 units rehab, 30 of them were rehabbed. I mean, you know, none of that makes any sense. And this township has to wake up. Thank you.
See if the other resident is able to unmute. Must have dropped off. Okay. Well, Julia, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you and your colleagues at Raff Tellis for leading us through this important work. We look forward to the next steps and towards ultimate implementation of a plan that we can all stand behind to guide the priorities for this township over the next several years. So thank you.
Thank you. It's really been a pleasant experience, and we wish the township all the best. And we'll be with you till this is done, so we'll look forward to your feedback. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Julia. You as well. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.